Mayor Baker.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmembers Berry.
Here.
Councilmember Curtis.
Present.
Councilmember Herbig.
Here.
Councilmember Danuski.
Excused.
Thank you.
A little piece of housekeeping here. We are out of an executive session and we are now in regular session. If you'll please stand and join me for the flag split.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You keep pausing. Because I've had mine for about nine months. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. If there are no objections, the agenda will stand approved as written. Next item on the agenda is a presentation from the Mountain Sound Greenway Trust regarding possible National Heritage Area designation. Ben Huey.
Hello.
Hi there. Welcome.
Rob, that's my presentation, but instead from the Mountain Sound Greenway Trust. Mayor Baker, members of the council, and please do your little presentation and run your mic. Check up.
Can you hear me a little better now?
Yeah, there you go.
Everybody? Okay, wonderful. So, now behind you conveniently is a little slideshow about the Mountain Sound Greenway. Do you also have it on your monitors? Okay, wonderful. There, that's much easier. So, this is the Mountains of Sound Greenway. It is a 1.5 million acre landscape connecting our cities with natural areas. It's kind of unique in the country, the accessibility of open space, and the way that nature is intertwined into our urban areas. We think this is a pretty special place and we have some ideas for how to keep it into the future. The Greenway encompasses vast natural areas, spectacular beauty, places where you can escape from the busy pace of life, but it also includes the places like the Burke Gilmun, the Samamish River, where we have green space right in our booming cities. It has working farms and forests that provide us local food and jobs for our economies and communities. The Mountain Sound Greenway Trust was kicked off in 1990 with a march from Snoqualmie Pass into Seattle along the interstate where activists said, "This is incredible. The fact that we can walk through forests alongside a major interstate to a huge city and we need to do something to make sure this lasts, these forests so close to our cities." So, by bringing together, in a time of controversy in the 1990s, this is the Timber Wars, the environmentalists were at the logger's throats, we set a table for the Sierra Club warehouse to find common goals where we could work towards solutions that everyone agreed upon. We have a board of directors of 60 people and additional 60 people on the Board of Advisors because we believe in that table setting that allows for collaboration across sectors. Early focuses of the organization were on land conservation and now, close to two-thirds of the Greenway is in conserve status, either publicly owned or privately with conserved easements. Outdoor recreation is a major focus because it allows people to connect to the outdoors. There are 1,600 miles of trails in the Greenway, but we also realize restoration is important to ensure that our public lands are the most ecologically healthy. We take 4,000 kids outside every year through our environmental education program. Fifty percent are of those in free or reduced lunch because we think we can cultivate a generation of stewards for this landscape. Our region is facing some major challenges. We have incredible population growth and we have to figure out a way we can accommodate that growth and retain what's special about this place. Our public lands are facing increasing challenges. Outdoor recreation is more popular. At the same time, our public agencies are seeing reduced budgets and so these facilities are becoming more and more strained. We think one way to approach some of these challenges is through a National Heritage Area designation for the Greenway. A National Heritage Area is a place where people live. It's public and private land and it's a part of the country that tells a unique, a unique part of America's story. So, other examples are the Erie Canal Way, Civil War heritage sites. This one's a little different and it is something that we think can be a valuable approach because it is an overlay that doesn't change any of the rules, private property rights, nothing has changed, but it says, "Look, we've got something special here. We should work across jurisdictions to improve, maintain it for the future." Yeah, completely non-regulatory. This would be the first in the Pacific Northwest. For the city of Kenmore, I think this is something that could be leveraged as a way to signify a connection to a larger picture. No, this isn't just a small piece of the Burke Gilmun. This is a connection in a larger regional trail system within the Mountains of Sound Greenway. No, this isn't just the end of the Samamish River. This is a watershed which is federally recognized as the Mountains of Sound Greenway National Heritage Area. It's a way to expand the picture, get people connected to the larger region. It could also be a promotional for heritage tourism. There's lots of opportunities where we could, where we could use this designation. It has wide support. King County Council, Kiddatask County Commissioners, multiple cities, dozens of businesses and organizations, over 6,000 individuals and organizations have signed on for support and we, there's a letter attached in the agenda that you can review as well if, and we welcome the city of Kenmore's support. We've been working on this for quite a few years. There was a bill introduced by Representative Reichert and Senator Cantwell in 2013 at last Congress. It made it through committee and did not quite make the cutoff at the end there. We had reintroduction this Congress and we're awaiting a committee. So, I'd welcome your questions.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes, thanks for the presentation. It seems like a great idea. I am curious about, you said it's non-regulatory, so what does that mean from a governance perspective and how would we as a city operate differently?
Yeah, it wouldn't change anything for your city, but it does provide opportunities. So, it's kind of an opt-in scenario in that neither the city of Kenmore nor the Forest Service has to change how they mandate, but for that federal agency, the Forest Service that says, "Hey, look, you can take a different perspective here and perhaps leave some of your, the narrow mandate for that forest and look across the landscape for partnerships and collaborations." It's something that you would be enabled to do now, but it's an extra encouragement and especially for that federal agency. It gives a directive and it could be an excuse for people on the landscape to say, "Hey, okay, we're a part of this bigger thing and we can collaborate."
Okay, thank you. And, because I remember vividly 25 years ago when this was rolling kind of in the I-90 corridor and when I first heard about this, I was surprised that we would even be considered within that area because it always seemed like a distant place. So, if we opted in, but let's just say Lake Forest Park and Kirkland for whatever reason didn't, does it have to be contiguous or is, how does that work?
So, the, the actual borders would be, are in the legislation and they would be designated. So, the opt-in would be for participation in any sort of, you know, promotion or shared The landscape would be designated and so Lake Forest Park would be technically within it, whether or not they participate.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? So, then, a little clarification on the letter. Congressman Reichert is the prime sponsor on the House and Senator Cantwell's the prime in the Senate.
Correct. Correct. And all representatives with any territory in the Greenway are co-sponsors.
I saw that as CC'd. So, if there are no further questions, I think what we'd like to do is get permission to sign off on this letter that's in the packet to, to support the Mountains of Sound Greenway.
I'd support that.
So, I think we can probably do this with just a yes or no. So, then I would make, I can't make a motion. Somebody needs to make a motion to authorize signing this letter. So, moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Okay, is there any further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I know I've been following this for some time and I know that there are others here that are also been following this and so we're very glad to, to be able to express our support.
Wonderful.
So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Much appreciated.
All right. Next item on the agenda then is, says in comments, "This is an opportunity for you to express your views and issues that are important to you and to the community. We ask you to please limit your comments to three minutes." There is a timer on that podium that is green. It'll go yellow when you've got 30 seconds left and it'll go solid red when your 30 seconds is up and if it starts blinking red, that means you've gone way over your three minutes. So, anyway, clerk, please call the first person.
State Representative Jerry Polet.
Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I just want to say, I think that the city of Kenmore has done a very good job defending your zoning determination that says you can't use piece of property for rubbleization, I love that word, of the 520 Bridge. What I'm here tonight to say is to assure residents of the 46th District and surrounding communities that we are going to scrutinize and scrutinize heavily the notion that KGM, the contractor, can do this work in the middle of Lake Washington. I'm very concerned about that. I know that that is not a determination that the city of Kenmore is making. It's a state issue and I intend to be making sure that we scrutinize it heavily. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Polet. And just to thank you for your concern for your district and certainly for the help and support that you have been for the city of Kenmore. We certainly appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Bob Green.
Bob Green, 6250 Northeast 182nd Street here in Kenmore. Speaking on behalf of the Northlake Neighborhood Association, we've attended the past couple of meetings considering this, concerning this bridge demolition issue. And frankly, I'm amazed at how this bridge demolition was kept quiet by KGM and set the stage for this confrontation with the city and now we're reaching out for quick solutions, force upon us. As a project manager in facilities, if I conducted my projects that way, I'd be shown the door in a hurry. So, I'm just, I hope the Department of Transportation takes that into consideration before engaging KGM in any further projects. This should have been well-vetted with our community. It should have been communicated. It should have been planned and not kept under wraps until the last minute. And so, I tried to access the agreement on the city website, but wasn't able to find it. I'm hopeful that there can be, the link can be more accessible. As a citizen, I'd like to know the hours of operation and who we can call in real time to get a response if, if the hours are exceeded or the conditions don't meet the terms of the agreement. It's hard to follow up later if there's some way we can communicate that rapidly. My understanding with city officials is they're going to remove the asphalt at the bridge site prior to demolition. I think that's a good move. And I was told that the hours would include Saturday. I'm not wild about that, but I guess their schedule requires that. We, we've already endured almost two years of constant noise, Saturday work. I went down to the site one day, you know, because they start at 4:00 AM in the morning when they were forming the bridge decks and was told that was their production schedule and that's what they were doing. So, I'd like a little more opportunity to get feedback than just that. So, and I appreciate the reduced intensity on the backup beepers specified in agreement. I want, that's a very invasive sound to our neighborhood and our community and I'd like to see that as, as our standard, our city standard because this goes on with, with the air harbor and all the gravel places. There's backup beepers constantly in our city, so we should kind of address that for the long term. And to conclude, I support the city council in your efforts to settle this without expensive court costs. I think it was the best available outcome, given the enormous momentum behind a major regional project such as this 520 Bridge. And I sincerely look forward to the day when Lake Point can become a mixed-use community that we all envision and we can move on beyond this. So, thank you for your efforts in getting this settled. It's, it's not the best situation for our community, but we, you did what you could. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Thank you.
Jack Smith.
That's me. So, no, I'm just here, I'm just listening.
Janet Hayes, 6303 Northeast 181st, Kenmore, Washington. And I wanted to add one little thing. I like the presentation, Mountains to Sound Greenway, and I wondered if they're, because they are concerned about cities and lakes and forests and parks, I'm wondering if, since you are listening to them in this, if you've asked their opinion on the changes that are due to occur at St. Edward's Park, just for their opinion on ball fields, on everything that you've got planned for the park. They would seem to be the experts. The next thing I wanted to ask about is the demolition that will be coming and done in Lake Washington. We heard this, this element of it from David Baker in December, before we heard it actually from Mara O'Brien at DOE, before Patrick presented it to you all in January, that this was coming here. We were told by David that they would be cleaning and breaking up the asphalt and cement in Lake Washington before they brought it here. At that time, I asked, "Why would they be bringing it here? What's the point of bringing it to Kenmore? Why not load it onto trucks from the barges that they're doing it on and have those trucks take it wherever it's supposed to be? Why does it come into the port or wharf at Kenmore?" We have a problem here with tugs and barges. We have a problem with our sediment. We have a very fragile shoreline. We have dioxins in our lake, in the north end of the lake in particular, and in the navigation channel. It just seems we're, we're just going to overload the lake and the environment with more issues. So, what I don't understand is why does it still have to come to Kenmore? I didn't understand it in December and I don't understand it now. What's here except a handy-dandy cement and asphalt plant that's grandfathered in and permitted to make new cement out of recycled concrete and asphalt? That would be my question and I'd like your ear to the ground to see if you might hear that that's what's coming, just like we heard that the bridge was going to be brought here in December. I also wanted to add that in your talks with KGM and your settlement talks, I had offered any information I had, thousands of pictures of what happens and what has happened for two years to the water, in the water, and on the water. And if there's still anything that you could use that would help alleviate, so we can still be stewards of the lake, not just stewards of Kenmore, we've got to consider that we have lots of other cities on Northlake Washington and we're stewards along with them of the whole lake, not just our little shoreline. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes.
Patrick O'Brien.
I'm not going to mince any words. We're in a pickle. I know, I've never minced words. And it seems though, as though the permitting process is what's caused this pickle. So, lack of understanding or clarity between who issued a permit, who was dealing with the contractor, and what you ultimately didn't know in January is the demolition was coming here and they had indications or felt like the demolition was on its way and you, of course, did know about it. But there's also the corresponding problems. They, they have falsified their permit process. They have not answered the questions that I've looked at with any candor. This material belongs in a containment field. It's, you know, all these materials are untested and until somebody tests them and you decide, "Oh yeah, you can just have them over navigable water where the dust or any, anything that could contaminate can flow due to surface tension on the water to any corresponding beach, as long as the, the wave action or wind will take it there," that's a problem because light dust will settle on the surface and if it's, the winds out of the north, it's going to head to Sandpoint, Lake City, Lake Forest Park, Kirkland, you name it. So, there's a problem there. The site, our site is unsuitable because it's obsolete. The asphalt plant and the, the concrete plant, no metering, no baghouse, no nothing. And they're supposed to use virgin materials to make the concrete and, and when you do this demolition, that is not virgin material. That's not native sand and gravel. That is something that had cars and trucks and buses on for 50 years with the asbestos brakes and you cannot, I think, I think as a city, you can say, "We're not going to permit this. We're not going to permit it. We think it's a federal issue at this point because it needs to go outside of our jurisdiction and you need the federal people to deal with the contractors who you earnestly tried to help for years and now they've come back and bit you as a city council with this lawsuit," which I think is wholly unfair to each and every one of you because that is not acting in a fair and reputable way when you did everything you could to facilitate the state project and initially you saved them 45 million. Then they also saved the additional money when they were able to sell the plonkings a great, great profit. So, there is money there to take those debris and instead of dealing with them here in Kenmore, deal with them in a sealed landfill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
Hi, Elizabeth Mooney, 5934 Northeast 201st Street in Kenmore. Just for the record, I'm not speaking on behalf of our nonprofit, but I am president of a nonprofit, People for Environmentally Responsible Kenmore. And People for Environmentally Responsible Kenmore have been concerned about the 520 Bridge coming in to Kenmore back in 2011, 12, et cetera. And we showed everybody then that the proper environmental laws had not happened as they should have and we proved that there should have been a reinitiation of the Section 7 Endangered Species Act. So, now what's happening seems just to be another rendition of not following the environmental laws, again, by that whole conglomerate. And I don't know why the city didn't go after WashDOT. You went after KGM and Lake Point, but isn't the real driver here, the Washington State Department of Transportation also? And if you really wanted to stop injustice to our environment in the middle of Lake Washington, council, then why don't you go after the agency that is using our lake and our shore? They never would have gone down through Seattle unless you hold their feet to the fire and say no. So, I hope that you will continue to fight to not have this project come into Kenmore. Don't let the rubbleization, and certainly, if, if this had to come into Kenmore, then why have you not required testing? You have to test before, during, and after in order to know whether or not we're being exposed. And if public health and safety is a number one, not number two, then you shall test. Not should, but you shall test for PAHs, that'll be from the oil, for the metals, the asbestos. How are you going to require them to test before, during, and after? Or are you going to let them off the hook? Please don't let them off the hook. If you add the particles that come from the 522 and you add that with asbestos dust, it's like cigarette smoking potentially and asbestos perhaps, but the point is, you need to test and you have to go through the SEPA and the NEPA. Say no.
Thank you, Ms. Mooney.
Macy Ratliff.
Hello, my name is Macy Ratliff and I live at 14925 73rd Avenue Northeast in Kenmore. I haven't gotten up in front of you guys very often, so I'll give it my best. I'm a 27-year resident of Kenmore, moved out here for the park, for the outdoors, and the proximity to the lake. I'm also an educator in the North Shore School District and just, and as part of my job was in, I'm a leader in the ecology program at Kenmore Elementary and, which is a wonderful program introducing, connecting kids with nature. For the past four months, I've lived out of state and, and truly blessed to be back here in Kenmore. We have so many treasures with the park, with the lake, and, you know, my, I just believe it's critically important to protect these, the treasures that we have, to carefully consider the impact of, do we, you know, with this potential demolition, is that really the best thing for our water? Are you, are we really looking at other options of removing this material? Curious of how, why Kenmore was chosen for this location and questions about, you know, if it is toxic transporting materials, what other ways could these materials be removed? Also, would love to carefully consider, is having ball fields the best option for, for St. Edward's State Park? Perhaps it is, but what have the city carefully looked at? Impact on nocturnal animals, the wetlands, the area there? Just quite, you know, important questions to ask. And I really love being in Kenmore and I hope that, you know, for, remain for generations to come for my kids, my grandkids. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ratliff.
Dennis Kroger.
Hello, my name is Dennis Kroger, 7339 Northeast 175th Street. I'd like to address two subjects. First, during the 520 Bridge construction, the tugs boats used by the contractor sent a lot of sediment into the marinas at Kenmore Air, Northlake, and Harbor Village Marinas. They should be required to dredge those areas of all three marinas that they had affected. If the city has any leverage over the contractor, it would be beneficial to the Kenmore boating community to have the channel dredged leading up into the Samamish River and the boat launch as it filled up back in 1996, only one year after it was dredged. Second issue is, prior to becoming a city, King Second issue is, prior to becoming a city, King County asked the voters to approve a bond to purchase Swamp Creek Open Space on Northeast 175th Street. Kenmore has changed the name of that land to Squire's Landing. The voters approved the bond because they were promised that the property would remain undeveloped with only soft-surface trails ever installed. This property is for bird habitat and wetland preservation. The current proposed aquatic center, parking lot, bathrooms, paved trails, and boardwalks are a violation of the restrictions promised to the voters. Please show the government can keep its promises and keep Squire's Landing as an open-space wetland. Rododendron or Log Boom Park would be much more appropriate locations for an aquatic center. Thank you.
There's no one else signed up?
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes, ma'am. If you would please, after you speak, sign in with the clerk, but come up here first.
Sorry, I was late.
That's okay.
I live at 16925 Inglewood Road Northeast, Number B 203, Kenmore. My name is Shirley Rosen, and I have resided in Kenmore for 27 years. Before that, I lived in Lake Forest Park and was quite active in the community. I've been disturbed, like everybody else here, and I'm the one that sent in a petition. We received at least 50 signatures from the residents at Inglewood Shores, where I reside. And we are, everybody in our buildings, we have three buildings there, and all of our residents, there are 67 units, is that right, Jacque? Sixty-seven, sixty-seven units. And almost all of them have signed that petition, other than people that are the snowbirds. And we respectfully request that you take a look at the petition. I'm sure you've all probably seen it, I would hope. And I know Nancy has. Thank you. And I would like to know exactly what stage you are in, the council is in regarding the demolition of the 520 Bridge. I mean, everybody's talking around it and asking you to not let it happen, but I don't know what the current situation is. And I would like to know exactly what the situation is and who we should contact. Anyhow, thank you very much, that's all I have to say. Except, I do hope you do something about the mill foil on the lake, because we cannot even bring a dinghy into our boat dock, because it's just a mess. So, thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Ms. Rosen. Anybody else, if you would please? There we go. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Thank you for your comments tonight. Representative Palet, Mr. Green, thank you. And Mrs. Hayes, Mr. O'Brien, Ms. Mooney, and Mrs. Ratliff, we thank you for your concerns, and certainly on the KGM issues, it's on the docket tonight. And Mr. Kroger, thank you. And Mrs. Rosen, I know you had a couple of questions. Can, City Manager, can you please just briefly go over hours of operation and what it is gonna happen tonight, for clarification?
Are we talking about the?
520.
Yeah, we're happy to do that during our presentation.
Okay, fine. So, we will be discussing those issues during the presentation. Next item, then, on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
And I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The consent agenda stands approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to authorize a Lake Point Settlement Agreement between Kiwet General Manson, KGM, and Lake Point Incorporated Pioneer Towing and City of Kenmore. Mrs. Owsley? And I think you've heard a couple of the, of the comments, and so if we can certainly touch on those and where we're at, would be wonderful.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, we are before you tonight to discuss a proposed settlement agreement between the city and Kiwet General Manson, Lake Point Incorporated, and Pioneer Towing regarding the issue of the demolition activities first proposed by KGM in March of this year, here in chambers. Received a briefing at that time. As you know, the, the city did communicate to KGM that the breaking apart, the rubbleization of the concrete was not in allowed use on, on the property. And that was communicated in, in late March. And since that time, motions were filed in Superior Court by the, by KGM and Lake Point property owners, appealing that letter decision. And the city also filed a challenge to the environmental reevaluation document that was issued by the State Department of Transportation and the Federal Highway Administration in late April. So, we have been involved in discussions with, with the bridge contractor and property owner since that time. And we believe that the settlement agreement proposed before you tonight does address many of the concerns that, that the council expressed on March 14th, when that initial briefing took place, what we've heard from the, from the community in numerous discussions. And we're happy to go over the, the points of, of the agreement that is in front of you tonight. So, I will say that, that the discussions have been diligent and, and detailed and, and went through the business day on, on Friday. And we got the information out to the, to the community as, as soon as we possibly could on Friday. I'm gonna turn it over to City Manager Rob Carlinsey to go over some of the main points of the settlement agreement that's before you tonight.
Thank you, Nancy. The settlement agreement is included in the packet tonight. It's right after the council bill. And the major components, or the major points of the agreement, start in Section 1. And you're welcome to go to that settlement agreement document and follow along. Starting with 1A, as Nancy mentioned, this is the most important part of the entire contract or settlement agreement. And that is, rubbleization of bridge concrete will not be done near Kenmore, and that this work shall be accomplished on barges on Lake Washington that are no further north than the most southern boundary of the Kenmore city limits. We talked to KGM earlier today to get clarification on that. And they're actually bound by the project limits. And the project limits are approximately within 1,000 feet of the 520 Bridge. And in particular, they plan on doing the rubbleization, kind of in the staging area, kind of on the Medina side of the, the lake there, within the project limits. So, that's one important clarification we got. If there was concerns that barges would be coming further up the lake, halfway between here and, and the bridge, I did get clarification that they are required to stay within 1,000 feet, or approximately 1,000 feet of the, the bridge itself. They, another important component is that they are allowed to transport rubbleized material through Kenmore, but, but under strict conditions. What they will do is they will transport the material from barge to truck without the concrete material touching the ground. There may be some pipe or railings that will be stored in bins on the site, but the concrete will be transferred from barge to, to truck. When it comes to the barges themselves and the, and the tugboats coming in, best management practices are in place already. They got additional clarification, I believe, back in 2013, when Washdott and Department of Ecology and KGM agreed on improved practices on how to navigate the barges and tugs, and thereby reduce turbidity and sediment displacement. And those agreed-upon practices will continue. Truck weight limitations is another part of this. They will comply with truck weight limitations, and they'll be, they'll be based on density and volume calculations. Noise monitoring will occur. We have a strengthened noise monitoring ordinance in place that you adopted approximately a year ago. And they will comply with that, both in monitoring and reporting on noise. Also, in, in Section 1F of the agreement, they're agreeing that their front-end loaders and the equipment used to transfer the material from barge to truck will have those quieter backup warning devices, instead of the loud beeping sounding, uh, warning devices. Mayor, you had asked about hours of operation. The agreement says that hours of operation for bridge decommissioning work will be from 8:00 AM to 6:30 PM, Monday through Friday, and 9:00 to 5:00 on Saturdays, with no work occurring on Sundays. That is more strict than the code currently allows. Code currently is 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Saturday and Sunday. So, those are reduced hours from current code. They'll take dust control measures and use best management practices to control dust. They're not going to haul material generated from this project across the Sumamish River Bridge. As you all know, the, the southbound bridge is an old bridge, over 70 years old. And it's important that we minimize heavy trucks going across that bridge, and weight limits are already in, on that bridge. But they're actually agreeing not to haul the material across that bridge at all. Periodic onsite monitoring and testing by city personnel will be allowed. And KGM will, shall provide the city with prompt information regarding any onsite spills or other mishaps. The approximate time period for this work to be completed will be from approximately now through the end of the year. And they'll also provide the city with an estimate of number of barge trips each week for the next two weeks on a rolling period. And then they'll provide reports on what actually happened when it comes to barge trips in Kenmore. So, those are the major items that are being agreed to in the settlement agreement. And I guess at this point, we'll open it up for questions from the City Council.
Questions? Councilmember Purvey?
So, circling back to Mr. Green's question earlier, who can citizens, who will citizens be able to call if they are operating outside of, normal operating, the operating hours in the agreement? Because we don't generally have people here outside of those hours. So, what options will somebody have?
We have a couple of options. One would be to file a citizen action request, which is a form that can be accessed through our internet. And we, when we come in in the morning, we'll get those. Another way would be to call us the next day and let us know those activities are going on. And lastly, the third way to handle a noise or complaint in Kenmore is to call 911 and report it to the police.
Deputy Mayor?
I think I need to express my concerns about the environmental impact of this. We've talked about noise and dust in the air, but dust settling into the water is a concern of mine. And I appreciate Representative Palet expressing his, his concerns as well, and, and his efforts to ensure that, that there's enforcement in place to, to keep an eye on this. And if they follow all the rules that are in, in place with Department of Transportation and Departments of Ecology, then we should be okay. But it's hard for me to understand how we can move concrete rubble and rebar and all that stuff off a barge onto trucks without causing dust, and, and then keeping a water spray on the dust to keep it from getting into the air. And then the water tends to run off the barge into water. So, somehow, KGM needs to control this to satisfy the, the regulations. And I think we need to keep an eye on them. And I think there are a number of people out there in the audience that will be keeping an eye on them. And I appreciate that. But I do have concerns.
Councilmember Curtis?
Related to that, I was wondering what laws and what agencies will be watching over this project and what protections we have.
KGM's contract with the Department of Transportation has a very complete list of environmental commitments. And, and that's actually attached to this agenda bill on what is online and available for, for people to examine. So, and that, that covers air quality, water quality, protection of fish, and a host of other issues. So, there are pretty stringent requirements that they're subject to. And you'll notice in the settlement agreement that it's all applicable laws and regulations that need to be followed.
So, I think one of my principal concerns has been our code, and what our code and regulation has said. And I think that the letter that we wrote initially, and the reaction that we had initially was because of land use decisions and how that doesn't work with what our land use decisions, our land use policies are here in Kenmore. And since the rubbleization is not occurring in Kenmore, that only the trucks are being loaded in Kenmore, and they've agreed to keep all dirt, all rubble off of the ground, trucking has continued here for, for a long, long time. So, trucking is part of the land use, permitted uses. So, I think that, that is good, that they have addressed that, one of our principal concerns. But again, I'm also concerned about the dust control and about contaminants getting into the water. And I believe, has there been any testing done on, on any of the, the concrete at this point?
Yes, KGM has done some, some testing on concrete and the old structure. As per the agreement, they provided us with those test results. And a consultant who has worked with us for, for quite a long time around that part of our city, around the, around the channel, has reviewed the report and provided that memo to the council.
Now, my understanding is that rubble will be transported off-site to aid landfill?
Correct.
So, all rubble that is taken off and loaded into trucks will be transported? So all rubble that is taken off and loaded into trucks will be transported outside the city to a landfill, and all loads will be covered. Is that correct?
That's right. Thanks for mentioning that, and that was another prime consideration too, is the loads will be covered once they're in the trucks.
And I think, well, the other thing was that initially the trucks would be backed up to the barge until sufficient space on the barge was cleared, and then the trucks would be backed onto the barge itself, so unloading would be taking place on the barge.
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Smith?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, you actually, on the use and the current code on there is, I mean, I look at that as really, that's the root cause here, because the environmental impacts and everything else all results because of what is allowed to happen there and what we've tried to prevent from happening there. And so when I look at this, it is far from perfect, there's no doubt. But I think part of, hopefully we can use this as we kind of look forward and we think, you know, maybe we can also make some reasonable revisions and adjustments in our code. And I think right from looking at this, immediately I think there's four things that pop out. And one of them is to look at our nonconforming uses. And right now, when there's a termination of a use, you have 12 months to start a new use. And when you look at some of the other city codes, it's as short as 90 days. So I think that's one area that we can look at and we can strengthen our code. Another area has to do with the transparency of what's going on that's a nonconforming use. And if we know it's not allowed by zoning, but yet it's legal because it's a grandfathered conforming use, well, I think we need to have a better handle on what's actually taking place at the site, so going forward, we all can be on the same page, whether it's the property owner, it's the community, it's the city. And I think that'll help avoid a conflict like this going forward. Another thing is to look at how we define expansion and extension versus intensification. And some of the other cities have much more definitive codes on how they define that, because clearly a lot of their work, even if it's a trucking business, trucking these components through our city, it very likely could have been stopped had we had something in our code that addressed the expansion and the intensity, or the expansion of the use. And then, lastly, I think it's worth considering, since it's not unusual to see it, and that's a termination of nonconforming uses, and have a sunset point where we can look at it and allow the property owners to amortize out their capital investment, but have a reasonable amortization where you can look at it and you can say, you know what, this isn't going the way our zoning changes we had anticipated 20 some years ago, and now moving forward, this is what we can expect. And so I look at this as really not a good, there's so many things that I feel like aren't in here what I'd like to see, but I also believe we're at a point where we have to work towards getting to an agreement and satisfying what our actual code tells us we need to allow and do. And so those are my thoughts, at least as we look forward.
Anybody else?
So one thing further is, just to clarify, all work in the deconstruction of that bridge has to occur within 1,000 feet of the new bridge. Is that correct? So all rubbleization will occur within 1,000 feet?
Approximately 1,000 feet.
So then that means that certainly Kirkland and whatever, it's going to be down right 1,000 feet within, from that, from the bridge. Wonderful.
Deputy Mayor?
You'd mentioned a fish window, yet, and I don't know when the fish window is, but if we start now and go through the end of the year, does that mean we've already had the fish window for 2016? Or is there a fish window coming up where they can't do this operation between now and the end of December?
Yeah, I'm not aware of the exact when the fish windows start and stop. Are you?
No, I'm not either, but the fish window for when they can't do any construction hasn't started yet.
It has not?
It has not.
Okay, so they'll be breaking the activity sometime between now and the end of the year for what, two months or three months, or what?
We could get that information for you. I don't think it's months, it might be weeks or something.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions?
So I guess then, at this point, the Chair will entertain a motion to authorize a Lake Point settlement agreement between Kiwet General Mensen and Lake Point, Inc., Pioneer Towing, and the City of Kenmore.
I'll make a motion to approve that settlement agreement.
Is there a second? I'll second. Any further discussion?
Councilmember Herbig?
So I've struggled with this vote over the last couple of weeks. I certainly didn't want to see additional heavy trucks driving through Kenmore or additional tugs going through our waters. On one hand, we've obviously done more than our part to help out Washdott and KGM on this project. We really went above and beyond and probably saved the state and the contractor millions of dollars, but we didn't really see any benefit. Instead, we got additional barge traffic stirring up who knows what in the sediment of the lake, and we got the noise of the major construction operation, and after tolls were put in place, we saw a huge spike of cars driving on Botha Way. So you can imagine my surprise when I saw the plans to rubbleize the old bridge in Kenmore. KGM's PowerPoint, you've got a picture of a huge jackhammer on the back of a Baco. The noise, dust, all of that from such an operation so close to so many residents, it was just unacceptable. Most importantly, though, it was illegal under our zoning. The proposed settlement agreement takes the rubbleization out of Kenmore, and as we've heard from staff, the work will be done within 1,000 feet of the new bridge, probably off of Medina. It's now up to state and federal authorities to ensure that the operation is handled safely on the lake, and I want to applaud Representative Palet's commitment to scrutinize those activities. In my personal opinion, and I want to be clear, I'm not speaking for myself here, not for the city, not for my colleagues here, if KGM had approached us in March offering to do this exact same trucking operation proposed in the settlement agreement, we would have been on very thin legal ice, and we very likely would have lost in court if we'd attempted to stop that. The agreement adds additional protections for Kenmore, gives us the ability to monitor their operations, controls their hours of operation, noise forbids them from using the West Semamish Bridge. The trucks driving through Kenmore are going to be covered, and the heavy industrial equipment will be fitted with the quieter backup beacons to help us reduce noise in Kenmore. This agreement minimizes the impacts to Kenmore residents. Is it perfect? No. While I may be holding my nose when I vote yes, I certainly don't want this trucking operation happening here in Kenmore. This is the best possible outcome that we can reach right now. Our man committed to ending industrial use on our waterfront, but I just simply can't justify voting no on this agreement today.
Councilmember Curtis?
I would just like to speak in favor of the settlement agreement, not necessarily because I agree with everything that's in the agreement, but because our city has a lot of really great, fantastic things to do the next three years besides be tied up in court fighting this. Even if we won, it wouldn't get our city where I believe we need to go. We've gotten most of the protections in. Without this settlement agreement, you know, a couple of months ago, we would not have been in the position we're in now. We really do have some protections that we did not have before. So I think, like all agreements, you never get 100% of what you want. If you get most of what you want, and you've got other things to be doing that I think are positive and worthwhile, then that's the direction I think we should be heading.
Councilmember Smith?
I too will speak in favor of it. You know, when we're elected, we don't get everything we want a lot of times, and this is a perfect example. And we have to consistently balance risk, legal obligations, ordinances, we have to balance everything, our budget, and this falls right into trying to create a balance that works. And I believe this is the best of a bad situation, and so I will be supporting it. And I'd also like to thank all the hard work from our staff and City Manager's office. I know you've done a lot of work on this. I'd like to thank Representative Palet for coming out this evening and his comments and our legal counsel at the city. I appreciate the hard work.
Councilmember Sperry, do you have anything you want to add?
Well, most of it has already been said. I would also like to say that, you know, I always ask the question, compared to what? You know? And when we heard from our, from the citizen that Kenmore, the bridge was coming to Kenmore and they were going to jackhammer it apart here, that was fairly shocking news. And of course, in mid-March, we heard some details that were more shocking. And since that time, the staff and the legal representation has worked really hard to come up with something that takes away those negative impacts and is basically something that we can live with. And I still appreciate and hope that the citizens will continue to be vigilant in watching and just making sure that things are done in a proper way. But again, thank you to the staff. This has taken a lot to get to this point.
Deputy Mayor?
I agree with everything that's been said by others, and one thing I do want to comment on, when we did hear the presentation in March about what they had planned to do, everyone on this council voiced their objections to it at the time, and we had not been informed of what their plans were before, and in no way had any of us really talked to each other about it. And we all came up with a very definite opposition to it, directive to our staff to work this out, and I think we've come up with a good agreement, that the best that we can in the situation. They're not busting up the concrete in Kenmore. The amount of dust and noise will be really minimized, I think. They'll just be trucking the stuff through the city. So again, it's the best of, a best agreement that we could arrive at, not perfect. I'd rather see them do nothing here and barge it all out through the locks and do it all down Tacoma or something, but that's a pretty expensive proposition, and I think if we forced them to do that, we would be dealing with this litigation for the next two or three years, as our Councilmember Curtis was saying. So this is the best solution, I think, that we can come up with at this time. So I'll vote yes.
So I guess I better add my two cents also. My job is to the citizens of this community. I was elected by the people of Kenmore, and it's my job to protect the people of Kenmore. We have codes in place, and those codes need to be honored. I believe that we have the best possible outcome here with this settlement agreement in that we have reduced noise, we have reduced dust, we have also required loads to be covered, and I also feel that with all of the work that's being done on 522, especially going west, the trucks will be going east. They will not be driving over the new highway. So I'm pleased with the outcome. I'm pleased that they will not be further deteriorating the bridge, and I think we have done the best job that can be done to protect the citizens of this community. So we have a motion on the table. If there's no further discussion, the clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Six oh.
Thank you. Thank you very much for all your hard work. Next item on the agenda is to adopt Resolution Number 16-280, directing the City Manager to refer on election ordinance to be brought forward to the City Council for consideration on June 13th.
I guess I'm up here all by myself tonight.
You are.
Yeah. So, the Imagine Kenmore process has been a long and fun and informative and engaging process. We're really appreciative that you, as a City Council, made it a priority and allocated the necessary resources to make it happen. The Imagine Kenmore Initiative started late last summer. The idea behind it was to learn from our citizens what they would like to see in the form of new transportation improvements, also parks improvements, and how much they would like to, what they would like to pay for those improvements, if anything. So the City Council went through quite a process and with the community where we had open houses and conducted an online survey and online interactive map and solicited comments through various media. We conducted two statistically valid surveys to really get a sense of what is it our citizens would like to see in the form of public improvements. We took all this information and boiled it down to the things that popped out most or the most, that were the most common, and then we put together several possible bond packages for you to look at. And in February and then again in March, we presented you with several bond packages for you to choose from, and you selected the walkways and waterways bond package to be further tested in a survey. The walkways and waterways list included sidewalks, new sidewalks and bike lanes on 68th Avenue and Juanita Drive from city limit to city limit. It also includes waterfront improvements at Three Parks, Log Boom Park, Rhododendron Park, and Squire's Landing Park. And so we took that walkways and waterways list and did a survey to find out if it matches up with the citizens' priorities, and it appears to do that. And so based on that, we're recommending that we move forward with a voter-approved bond measure in the fall and ask the citizens if they would like to increase their property taxes in order to fund these projects that I just mentioned. In order to do that, the City Council needs to pass a bond election ordinance. So tonight is a resolution that would direct me to come back with a bond election ordinance, and we're proposing that that be brought forward to you on June 13th. So that is my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, City Manager. I have a question regarding, if you could provide some clarification with regards to Mr. Kroger's comments this evening on the deed restrictions at Squire's Landing Park and how that may or may not be impacted, whatever exists on those restrictions for the improvements that are planned.
Yeah, we are aware of those restrictions. We have researched them. We do believe that there is some flexibility in those restrictions. Creating paths and access points to the water and means to get there is, we believe, within those deed restrictions. Creating more active uses, like installing a boathouse, isn't, but there are ways to address that through land exchanges that we would need to negotiate with the county and the State Recreation and Conservation Office. Thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
I would just like to say that I was really happy with this whole process. We actually do care what our citizens think, and I think we reached out in many different ways. Sometimes just one open house doesn't capture everybody. We had enough different ways of contacting our citizens. We actually do care what our citizens think. And I think we reached out in many different ways. Sometimes just one open house doesn't capture everybody. We had enough different ways of contacting our citizens. And honestly, I don't care what our citizens vote for. If they say, no, we don't want to have a bond, we want to put all these projects on hold for a definite period of time, I will listen to the citizens. You know, as a citizen, I have one vote, and I will cast my one vote. But if they say, yes, let's go ahead, let's move some of these up and get some extra safety, you know, with our zero deaths goal with getting access to the water, then I'm ready to go that way too. So the citizens will direct us, and I trust Kenmore's citizens to do that.
Do we have any idea on what this is going to cost to go to election?
What King County Department of Elections will charge us?
Exactly.
Yeah, it's here in your council bill. It's approximately 21,000 to 28,000 for the actual election cost, and the voter's pamphlet cost will be between 1,300 and $2,000. That's, that cost is based on being as part of the general election. If it was a special election, the costs would be significantly higher because we would not be sharing costs with other jurisdictions.
That seems to me to be less than what we paid a number of years ago to put something on a general election ballot. So, thank you. Any other questions? So Chair will entertain a motion to have the City Manager draw up a resolution, or bring back Resolution Number 16-280 to us on the 13th of June.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
So, aren't we voting on the resolution, but then we'll get an ordinance to come back?
Right. We're going to adopt the resolution and which directs the City Manager to prepare the bond election ordinance to be brought forward.
Thank you.
So is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? So just for clarity, the motion in front of us is to adopt Resolution Number 16-280, directing the City Manager to prepare a bond election ordinance to be brought forward to the City Council for consideration on the 13th. If there's no further discussion, clerk, please take the roll. One second. Councilmember Sperry?
Just wanted to comment, actually, this is one of the best resolutions that you've written because it explains basically how we got here and what we did and everything. But one of the aspects of it that I think is really important is how remarkably consistent our citizens have been in wanting new sidewalks and bicycle facilities and new access to the waterways. And so I'm very much in favor of at least bringing this to a ballot and seeing what the citizens decide.
All right. There's no further comments. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Six oh.
Next item on the agenda, staff report.
Just one item, Your Honor, and that is, we have a new employee. Her name is Sarah Sandquist, and she's the volunteer and events coordinator replacing Cindy Shelton. We're really excited to have her onboard. We stole her from the City of Redmond. And she seems very energetic, and I'm anxious for you all to meet her. And she's going to continue the great legacy that Cindy left, and that is to grow our volunteer program and community engagement and connection with our citizens and all that good stuff. So we're happy to have her. She started last Wednesday. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is councilmember reports and comments and initiatives. Councilmember Smith?
The only thing I would like to add is, and I forgot, I was going to mention it to you guys last Monday, but when I went into Karn Brewing on their opening night, or maybe it was a night after, I don't recall, but the owner, Bill, said 75% of the reason he was here in Kenmore was because of our assistant city manager, Nancy Owesley, and the work she had done. So I wanted to recognize her for that.
Yeah.
I thought that was, that was something that was really nice and completely unprovoked that he offered, and so it was well worth passing on. Thank you. That's it.
Councilmember Sperry?
Well, Mayor, you might address this, but we had an art, public art meeting for the sculpture that's being designed for our new town hall. And I think we're getting there. That's a good, we're getting there, so.
Yeah, it was previewed at the hydro races, at I think the before event and the after event, and a number of people have seen it, so it won't be a terrible surprise, but I think it's going to be iconic. Councilmember Curtis?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Herbig?
Nothing to add.
Deputy Mayor?
I'll pass, I'll pass tonight, too.
The event last weekend, the Redmond to Kenmore race, three times as many boats entered this year as last year. There was 20 boats and 27 participants, including a small child and a dog. The small child took a nap while his mother paddled in a small kayak, and the dog also took a nap. I think they were both glad when it was over, and the winning time was 1 hour 30 minutes and 23 seconds. And there's no, people just did it for fun. And from the response that we got, I would not be surprised if there were 40 to 50 boats next year. People really, really enjoyed it and thanked us for putting it on and commented on how beautiful the river was and the trip down. So we're excited about that. And I think there was an email that went out, but it's, I think it's pretty great that MSRC picked up Hank and started talking about Hank Heron and all of that from the Kagayama event. So all in all, I think we, Kenmore has come out pretty good on this stuff, and Hank is getting a lot of notoriety. I noticed tonight, while we were here and there was people talking, that there was a group of adults, older people, out at the Hank Heron picture there, sticking their head through and getting their picture taken. So that is being used. So if there's no further business to come before the council, we are adjourned.